Four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded by LCTV and aired live. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My religion is the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of Republicans, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with correspondence.
The following correspondence will be recorded. A letter from Mr. Bill Mori of Long Meadow Volunteers received on July 22nd, 2024, asking for assistance from all stakeholders in keeping the school grounds clean. An email from Ms. Elizabeth Morgan dated August 15th, 2024, seeking interest from the school committee to speak at the Long Meadow Pride Event on September 15th.
All right, thank you. Moving forward to approval of minutes, we have a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the July 16th, 2024, school committee meeting as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing them, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, public speak, we do not have any folks here in person and I do not see anyone online. All right, we have no business with guests, we're moving on then to school committee announcements and recognitions. First up, just a quick note of appreciation to all of the folks who have worked on their schools throughout the summer. So everyone who's been able to pitch in on curriculum, on building maintenance, on playgrounds. There've been a lot of projects going on over the summer to get ready for the new school year. So a big thank you to all of our educators, to all of our administrators, to all of our building staff, and also to all the community members who were able to pitch in as well. We're looking forward to getting started next week and appreciate the work that everyone has done to make that happen. Next up, a note on the appointment to the school committee. As a reminder, we have a vacancy on the committee right now and are looking to fill that. So anyone who is interested in being appointed to the school committee for a term that will run through June of 2025, should submit a letter of interest and resume to the school committee and select board via email by no later than Monday, September 9th. More information on that is also available on the longmeadow.org front page. If you scroll down towards the bottom, you can see detailed information on how to do that there. Interviews for all interested candidates will be held on Monday, September 16th, with an appointment happening on Tuesday, September 24th. So if you are interested, please reach out via email with a letter of interest and a resume by no later than September 9th. That's all for me, we'll turn over to any other school committee announcements or recognitions. Jamie?
Yep, just one, Arlene Miller put together a pizza party for all the custodial staff last week. She did an amazing job during this event and there's a host of other people that I failed to. You know, I know Arlene was the one leading the charge on it, so call her out by name, but there was many others who helped. It was a very wonderful event, about an hour where everybody just got their chance to appreciate the staff. Glenn Brook?
Wonderful, thank you. Any others? All right, seeing them, we're moving on to other reports, superintendent.
Sure, a few items for you tonight. We are, I think at this time of year, we turn our attention to the readiness for opening and we are well positioned. Sort of two things that we pay close attention to is facility readiness and hiring. And so I'd say we're generally in a better place with hiring than we've been in recent years. So that's helpful. We still have about, about five vacancies in the paraprofessional ranks that we're working actively to fill, but we have some good candidates and we think that we'll be nearly fully staffed in that area as we start the year. We do need an athletic trainer and that is something that we'll have to send some communication to families out on that if we're not able to identify a trainer and if we have to rely on EMT services, we'll want to put families fully on notice. We will, by all means, meet the statutory requirements for coverage of athletic events, but we're working hard, our athletic director, high school principal, Mr. Mazza, they're working hard to identify a good candidate for that position. But we'll be sure to communicate to families where we stand on that and what they can expect or not expect if we don't have a trainer in place. The school committee posted on that as well. So hiring, generally in good shape, facility-wise. To echo what our chair reported, thanks to everyone that works throughout the year to prepare classrooms and offices and the tech staff, the custodial staff, the maintenance staff, or clerical staff. And then so many teachers are in their classrooms throughout the year. The most recent facility challenge, as this committee knows, is, was at Wolf Swamp. And we experienced some really high active humidity at Wolf Swamp. It created some mold in the ceiling cavity along a chiller pipe. And we responded swiftly to that. There were really four entities that were involved in the response. It was our own DPW team, Abide is an abatement company that joined us, an industrial hygienist, a firm called Atlas was involved. And then our DPW team also called in MassDPH to sort of inspect our progress and plan to address that. So spaces continue to be cleaned and remediated, but it was safe to, staff was able to safely occupy the building on Monday. Still some carpet cleaning to be done that we'll kind of work around, but we're in good shape at Wolf Swamp and we feel like we'll be ready to go for the kids. The other facility issue is the playgrounds, some unanticipated delays there. Some related to the contractor and subcontractor and their schedules, some relating to weather, some relating to some missing parts, that particularly is the issue at Wolf Swamp. So we're hoping to pour the final surface at Blueberry tomorrow morning. At least that's the most recent report. So after that surface cures, Blueberry will be ready to go for the first day of school, a week from today. Center School just learned just before the meeting that the pouring of that surface will likely get delayed until, for another week or two. And then Wolf Swamp is behind that because they're waiting on a critical part. So project is, like all things that you try to plan out and with many construction projects nowadays, didn't go exactly the way we had hoped. But town manager's office, DPW, they are staying on top of the contractors as best they can and the subcontractors. And so when they are complete, we'll be sure to have some events at each school to acknowledge all the advocates on this project and also the town officials and town committees. We'll be sure to invite them to some opening events as well. So we're excited to get the playgrounds up and running, but we're still working through the final stages there. And other than that, the other things that are sort of occupying our time is making sure that we have gone through all the Chromebooks, yeah, to make sure that those are ready for redistribution to the students as early as possible as well. So tech staff is working hard on that. So we're, we're in good shape and a lot of thanks to our custodial crew, maintenance crew, for doing all the work they do throughout the summer to get the spaces ready. Happy to answer any questions you might have on any of those things.
All right, thank you.
I have one question. Will the kids at Center and Wolf Swamp be able to still go outside for recess? Or will it be like a construction zone?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so Wolf Swamp, we're fortunate that it's spacious and there'll be plenty of room for recess there. Center School, same thing, they'll be able to have their recess, but they might have to contain it to the hardtop or even to the front of the school. So we're actually meeting with Principal Hutton tomorrow morning with DPW just to kind of plot that out, just to see what areas we can fence off from the construction area so the kids can safely have recess. It might, the, you know, Center School, anyone who has been to Center Schools opening day knows that it's quite a community event out on the playground where they welcome kids and families. So we'll have to sort of, we'll still be able to welcome families and kids in the way we have in the past, but we might have to sort of change the location of that entry on the first day of school. So that's something that Principal Hutton's working on as we speak, I would imagine. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so moving on then, other administrative reports?
Just briefly, we are hoping to have the bus routes and passes mailed tomorrow. Working with LPVAC, they are introducing the My Ride K-12, which is a parent communication app to provide parents with estimated arrival and departure times so that they kind of have a better window of where and when their student will be home and what time they'll be dropped off if they're running late. So it is scheduled to roll out. We will be attaching information to the letter that goes out, informing them of the bus stop and times and then the information on the app and how to access it. So hopefully that will improve communication, especially with the challenges with staffing, with drivers and buses being late getting to the schools in the afternoon.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any update from our student representative?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So fall sports began yesterday, so just good luck to all of our fall sports athletes. And then on Friday, the 17th is the last Friday, all students at LHS received their courses and schedules for the year and they can now meet with counselors to resolve any sort of schedule conflicts. I know Mr. Rosemont sent out a signup genius link, so hopefully if you haven't done that yet, there should still be some availability for tomorrow. And then on Monday, the 26th, is our new student orientation.
All right, wonderful, thank you, Andrew. Other reports, LPVAC, Energy and Sustainability, or SEAL, any reports?
Oh, I have a report.
Yeah, go for it.
On September 7th, there's going to be a back-to-school meet and greet at Bliss Park with all the SEAL members and Nicole Paris-Crowe is going to be there, I'll be there. And it's from 10 to 12, did I say that already? Yeah.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Any update from LPVAC, Zach? Do they start again in September?
No update.
All right, great, thank you. All right, subcommittee reports. We have no report from finance. Policy sub is meeting next week on the 26th and curriculum sub met on Thursday, August 15th. Michaela, can you take that one?
Yeah, so we met last week and Nilda Azari presented to us about the new state frameworks for health and wellness. And she really discussed how thoughtful and collaboratively the staff here took the new information from the state and has looked it over and worked together to update the curriculum. And she's going to present to us all later at some point in the fall.
All right, wonderful, thank you. No report from evaluation sub and we are on to ongoing business, middle school building project.
Certainly, it has been a busy summer for the building project and the, our design team and our administrators who are involved in the project. And so it might be helpful just to take this opportunity to update the committee and the community on a few things. So, so this is our, our project schedule. You'll see that we are really in the middle of a long road and there's some sort of dense milestones in the middle of this, of this journey. And we are, we've sort of gone through, in May and June, we submitted a preliminary design program to the MSBA and that was essentially just to identify what some of the design options would be. And you'll see that the current arrow is approaching the time where we will submit, this is a major milestone, a preferred schematic report to the MSBA. The plan tentatively is to submit that preferred schematic report to the MSBA on August 29th, following a building committee meeting next week. And so with that preferred schematic report, the building committee will identify a preferred design option that will be advanced to a full schematic design. And so it's an exciting place that we're at. Recent activity has included a butters meeting on August 15th, 2024. It was well attended, we had an opportunity to talk about the site selection process, a variety of traffic mitigation strategies that we are considering. An opportunity to take in some input from the butters as well and heard their perspectives and their concerns. We also, didn't really get too much into this, but we were prepared to talk about the sort of overall option for design and the aesthetic and how we can create a building that complements the community and the neighborhood. And really the, sort of the massing of the building will be an important factor in making sure that we come up with a design that is suitable for, for the preferred site. The preferred site identified by the building committee has been the Williams Middle School site. Candidly, the butters brought us some concerns about, about traffic and the impacts to the, to the, to the neighborhood. We will continue to listen and gather their perspectives. I think one of the ideas that came out of that meeting that seemed to gather some momentum was having in a butters working group that would sort of be a standing group that would work in an advisory capacity to the building committee. So I thought that was a great idea and just a way for us to continue the communication loop between us and the butters. The site has been identified through a, through a preliminary traffic study as, as a feasible site. That's just a sort of preliminary traffic study. A more detailed study would have to take place during the schematic design phase. So we'll continue to stay engaged with our, with our neighbors there and make sure that we're doing our best to address any concerns that, that rise. The design team is very sort of behind the scenes, but actively studying existing conditions at the Williams site. And that includes the assessment of existing utilities and what the requirements might be. And so studying everything from fire hydrants to stormwater requirements, sanitation requirements and whatever electrical service might be required at that site as we go forward. And certainly with turning this into sort of a highly energy-efficient building, the services that, the electrical service at least that is extended to that site would have to be, would have to be addressed. All things, these are all things that can be incorporated into the overall project budget. And then the design team, our architects at JWA are working with their consultants to identify cost estimates of this preferred schematic design options. And the, the preferred, the options that are being studied further for cost estimates are those that are here. The, a basic base repair at each site, the MSBA requires that information. They want to know what a base repair would cost at the Glenn Brook site and what it would cost at the Williams site. Keep in mind, those first two bullets would only be schools for 345 students, I think it is. So the building committee really has, you know, has set those aside as potential options because they're, it's not a solution that would incorporate all the students, all of our middle schools, middle school students. The, we're also coming up with cost estimates for an addition renovation at the WMS site and then new construction at the WMS site. The sort of three of the, one of the variables rather that is, that will influence the ultimate costs if the, if we chose to go with a new construction would be whether or not we opt for an auditorium, a cafeteria, or a gymnatorium. And so that's something that, these are all things that the building committee will learn more about at its meeting on August 27th. So yeah, next steps is that, that August 27th meeting. And some of the things that are lined up for the agenda include a report out on the butters meeting and update on the site investigation, a review of those cost estimates. And potentially the building committee could vote to potentially select a preferred schematic design and submit that to the MSBA based on the information that they receive on the 27th. So it's an important meeting, it's an important stage that we're at. I can pause there, I can show you just some of the early, early designs associated with each of the options that we're studying, but I don't know if anybody has any questions to this point.
Questions as of now? I can't see that.
Nope, not seeing any. So again, a listing of the preliminary design options that we are developing cost estimates for are listed here. And then again, just some of the, what it potentially could look like. This is potentially what the footprint of an ad reno could look like. You'll see that anything boxed in, the dashed lines would be new construction. But you'd see that here in the, in the sort of upper part of the building, there would be an attempt to save the auditorium and the stage and some of the peripheral spaces there and in most of the cafeteria as well. So that's the, sort of a rough look at what the, an ad reno option would look like at the Williams site for 665 kids. The design that seems to be gathering the most attention is what we're calling a curved spine. Part of the thought here is that it would be an optimal design for the shape of the site, but it would also be an optimal design for natural daylighting and energy efficiency. And what, what is seen here is what the, what that footprint would look like with a, with an auditorium, a new Williams with a, with a new auditorium. This is a, a new Williams with a cafeteria. You can see that it's a, it's a somewhat more compacted footprint. And again, this, I think we just need to do some additional study on the advantages, disadvantages and the costs associated with cafeteria versus auditorium versus gymnatorium. To the right, just a, on the right-hand side would be level two. So this would be a, a two-story middle school. And then just a real high-level look at what the site might look like with each of the design options here. And so this is the, the curve, this is how potentially the curved spine option with the auditorium would sit on the site. I show this because the, the roadways that we are, that the design team is studying and developing options for, provide us some options really to mitigate some of the traffic concerns that we've heard. You know, the, the length of the roadway, the number of cars that we can queue, the length of the load and unload zone, the separation of staff parking from the car line and the separation of those two things from the bus, from the bus loop as well, which potentially is at the, at the south side of this site here. So again, you know, all of the, the eventual design of the roadways, you know, really needs the full attention of the design team. We need feedback from butters, from, from Long Meadow Police, Fire and DPW. We've been actively involved with them as well. One of the requirements of public safety is to make sure that there's sort of 360-degree access to the site. And so the design team is coming up with some options in response to that. We'll have, we have a, a meeting in early September with Police, Fire and DPW and the design team where hopefully we have an opportunity just to literally sit around a table with, you know, big maps of the, of the campus to really start to think about how traffic will, will move in and around and off the campus. This is the curved spine with the cafeteria. Again, just a, I'll go sort of back and forth. You can see it's a slightly more compact design, but overall it's situated on the site in a similar way. And then the curved spine with the gymnatorium. So the building committee will dive, you know, fully into these options at its meeting on the 27th and hopefully have some really robust discussions about what the, what the best preferred solution is for us. So appreciate your, your time on that and look forward to updating the committee at the conclusion of the, the building committee's meeting on 27th.
All right, questions and/or comments from folks?
Just two questions, I'm going to come to the building committee. The road, Williams, has there, has there been any discussion in taking part of that road to help with the traffic flow? Within the, I'm talking actually on Williams going this way?
Yes, there, there has been discussions about kind of opening up a turn lane.
Yeah.
And that needs to be more fully studied and really understand what the impact of that would be on the neighborhood. But yeah, it would allow some additional cars to queue up as they turn onto the campus and then.
Cannot block the flow because you're going to double, probably double the traffic there.
Right, right. My, my quick, my high-level summary of this is really that, that double the, double the enrollment doesn't necessarily have to mean double the traffic. In other words, you know, there's so many elements that can be designed into this campus and around the campus to make sure that we're moving traffic more efficiently, frankly, a lot more efficiently than, than we are right now. There's so many, so many features of a well-designed campus that aren't currently in place at the Williams site. Sinage, roadways, wider roadways, better unload loading zones, you know. There's a lot that can be put in place to really move things along efficiently. But there is some, there is some discussion of that.
And just the, making the schools look similar, is that a topic too? Or is it just based on the site, we're just so constrained by the, the layout of the layout that we got?
In terms of the, sort of the outward appearance, the, the overall sort of aesthetic about it?
Yeah, I mean, you drive around the other towns, other towns are way more, you know, I feel like we're very much like the UMass campus. You drive in and go, what architect designed what and what time? We're kind of like, who, like what, you know what I mean? Usually you have similar designs, but our buildings have nothing that's similar.
Yeah.
You have this, you know, very New England-y center school.
Yeah.
And then everything else is like the biggest mish, mishmash of like, I don't know who.
Right.
You know, this looks like it's going to be like a whole different than everything else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they've gotten that far, but I know they have begun to study the local architecture. So JWA has toured the town and they've taken photos of historic buildings and existing schools and.
Does that come back to the committee to pick and choose that?
That'll come back to the building committee.
So that building committee will kind of go, hey, this makes the most sense and they're going to come to you with.
Yeah, there, there could be, there could be sort of satellite committees that advise the building committee, you know. So there could be a, a design committee. There could be, there could be a team of educators that are involved in some of the furniture, fixture and equipment decisions. So I, I think that, you know, the building committee, my sense is the building committee will want to gather input from people that really know, you know, best design practice.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Other thoughts, comments, questions? All right, reminder, that meeting on the 27th is open to the public and we'd love to see as many folks as possible turn out to find out a little bit more before that preferred design schematic. All right, so where are we? Oh, MASC conference. Just a quick note and reminder that the annual Mass Association of School Committees, Mass Association of School Superintendents Joint Conference is coming up in Hyannis on November 6th through the 9th. If anyone on the committee is interested in attending, it's always great to have a good showing at committee at those conferences and be able to collaborate with other school committee and superintendent districts across the state on topics related to education. So if anyone is interested in attending, reach out to Diane to coordinate. And then we're headed into new business, school calendar, 2425, we've had a request.
Yeah, thank you.
Once again, back to you, sir.
We had, earlier this month, a request from Long Meadow Public Safety to have us. consider the impact of the, of running school on Election Day on November 5th. And it started with a request from Public Safety. It really came to us from Chief John Dearborn, who serves as the town's emergency management director. So Chief Dearborn had with, along with the town manager and Police Chief Stocks, had sent us a request to consider closing Center School on Election Day. And so Center School was identified because it's proximity to the polling place. They expect that it's going to be a very active election day and that there will be considerable amount of traffic and congestion. It'd be a very busy area. And so for election security and overall town safety and preparedness, they had asked us to close Center School on that day. As we thought about it, it seemed that closing one school always presents sort of operational challenges for us and it challenges families who have kids in different schools. And so our recommendation to you tonight is to accept the request of Long Meadow Public Safety and close Long Meadow Public Schools on November 5th. We have, this was a, the solution that we would, the, the adjustment to the calendar would be to make October 4th a day of school. October 4th currently on the current 2425 calendar is a professional development day. So we would simply switch those days and the 4th would become a day of school. November 5th then would become a professional development day. We did run this through the calendar committee. The calendar committee sort of was queried via a survey and they were unanimous in supporting the flip-flopping October 4th with November 5th. So for the committee's consideration to adjust the 2425 school year calendar to make November 5th a professional development day and to have a regular day of school on October 4th.
All right. Any discussion, questions and/or possible motions?
Yeah. I move that the school committee approve the amendment to the 2024, 2025 school calendar to move the professional development day scheduled for October 4th, 2024 to November 5th, 2024.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
Can I, a quick side note?
Yeah.
That I just want to underscore that this is really more about preparedness, that there's not any report that police or fire or the town has received that, you know, sort of suggests that this is a imminent safety matter. It's really just the police and fire want to be in a position of preparedness for that day and they really want to be attentive to the controls and election security on the 5th, so.
Makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to acceptance of a donation. We have a few gifts from the school and we have a form filled out on gifts for the school and we're going to hear a little bit more about those. Two gifts to Long Meadow High School.
Yeah, I might need some support from Mr. Maz on this one. The, I, I know you've been in touch with the donors. There's been a donation for an automated timer for the track team. And are you able to take this one a little further?
Yeah, they threw some fundraising of the boosters for the track teams. They've raised some money and also received a donation to offset the cost. So we hope to have this equipment in, which could be used, I believe, for both cross-country and for track. So hopefully to be put in use this fall. Don't recall exactly. I think it came from the CAPひとつ foundation, $3,000.
All right.
And there's, there's one other donation on here that in, in my view, doesn't need action by the committee. A local restaurant had offered to cover lunch for the Long Meadow High staff on Monday?
Monday.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's really your donation policy relates to things that become the property of the school district. So this lunch wouldn't become the property of the school district, but it is a very nice gesture from, from the, from the restaurant and LHS would like to take them up on that offer. But I think the only one that really needs action, in my view, by the school committee is the automated timer.
All right. We have questions, comments, possible motions?
Yep. I move that the school committee accept with genuine appreciation the two gifts to Long Meadow High School as described on the gifts to the school document dated August 20th, 2024.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela? Yes. Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you to our donors for both of those gifts. We have one final motion remaining for an executive session and we will not be returning to open, reconvening an open session. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Yep. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Section 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with Unit A. And Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings not to reconvene in open session.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful beginning to the school year and we will see everyone again in a few weeks. Thank you, Andrew.
Good night, Andrew.